The July 22, 2025 meeting of the Richmond Sanitary District Board of Commissioners is called to order. The first item of business is to receive bids for the Levy project.
Looks like there was two received. First one's from Brombach Construction and from Arcana, Ohio. We have a bid bond attached. So it's broken out by items. Should I just give you the total?
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay. So the total listed here is $1,598,728. Scope and breakdowns attached, so I'll just pass along for review. The second one is from, and I apologize if I mispronounced this, Feynman?
Theeneman.
Theeneman Derigl, thank you, from Westfield, Indiana. I believe that one and this one both acknowledge addendum number one. Total amount here is $2,242,000. There is a breakdown attached. And a bid bond.
And we thank those who have submitted bids for the project. We will refer those to management for a later recommendation at a later meeting and approval at that time. Is there anyone here who would like to see these bids?
Yes.
Okay. We will. The next item of business is to receive the quotes for cleaning services, and it looks like we have one.
Correct. One from Elite Cleaning from Richmond, Indiana. They've attached liability insurance and certificate from Workers Comp, Indiana. Looks like the front says Elite Cleaning, but they've scratched it out and said Elite Clean. Just want to clarify. The amount is $125 per week, $25 cost for extra services per hour.
We also thank those who submitted a quote for cleaning service. As well, will be referred to management for a recommendation at a later meeting. Anyone, I guess, want to review this bid quote? All right. Hearing no one, I will move on to the next item of business, which is the approval of board minutes from June 24 of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for approval of board minutes from June 24, 2025, as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion as second to approve board minutes from June 24 of 2025 as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess, should we put it down as miscellaneous, the June 10 meeting? Attorney here, but I...
No, I kind of asked for it, but I think we'll still amend it if you want to do that.
Okay. We'll put it as miscellaneous then. Okay. The next item of business is approval of invoices from check dates June 20 and 27, and July 4 and 11 of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for approval of invoices from check date June 20 and 27, along with July 4 and 11 of 2025. The total amount was $939,176.53. Notables included JCI Jones for $15,000, Keystone Cooperative for $30,395.28, Pyramid Equipment Incorporated for $436,867.20, two from Richmond Power and Light in the amounts of $28,829.76, along with $44,801.15 Merrill Brothers Incorporated for $173,185, Quality Repair Service for $19,928.67, and finally, Xylem Water Solutions for $14,174.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve invoices from check dates June 20 and 27, and July 4 and 11 of 2025 totaling $939,176.53. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the Director's Report.
Yes, Madam President and Board. There are two months of reports where I was backlogged there. There's April, May in front of you. The one item of note I would like to make on them is what we've discussed in the past, where there was some light revenue in the February, March one, and it had to do with timing and getting things to offices. But you will see these two months, it's heavier than normal, and that again balances us back out to our normal average. And again, it wasn't a receipt of different funds in different ways, it was just the paperwork that goes between finance and our billing office, and when that was done, due to some short staff issues. Beyond that, I don't have anything else of real note in the report, unless there are questions, though.
No. I just, you know, did notice that our pickups on the Thursday continue to be down, but I also see in the GPS recommendation is maybe to help realign those routes.
Correct.
That's interesting. A good use of that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will thank you and move on to the next item of business, which is the recommendation for the purchase of the Samsara GPS units using Sourcewell contract.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Let me scroll down here on my phone real quick. Yes, Sanitary District is in the process of implementing asset management software, as we've spoken several times and went over. But the district is also in the process of updating the recycling program and associated routes. This has been looking to add GPS units to its fleet. The units, the GPS units will pull engine codes that will be used with the asset software. The live GPS data is also the backbone for the routing software that the district will utilize later in association with recycling route changes. The units and the front-facing camera that comes with it should also increase accountability and compliance on both the customer and the staff side of operations. And to touch on what you said, Sue, yes, on the routing, it's more complicated, I think, than even sometimes I think about when you just think about changing the routes that we're going to do if we try to double that collection. Like, you currently have a Tuesday route, and I'm kind of showing with my hands, it's the whole geographical area of this Tuesday. If we try to double the amount of cans in that Tuesday, we don't want it to be first comes, first served, so I cover the whole geographic region both days, right? There's going to be a portion of cutting that in half, and that's complicated. Some of these are alleys, we have right-handed trucks, we can only go one way down these roads. So it's a fairly complicated process. As we reviewed the routing software that couples with this, it really starts helping, and it will kind of determine all of this automatically. You can get a white glove service as well to kind of help review it, but the data itself will help break those routes up. It also adds things if a truck breaks down, it can be auto-assigned the remaining portions of a route to another truck, and it'll show exactly where a truck left off. So it kind of helps us avoid missed stops. Having it built in this way, even though we have paper versions of all the routes now, and there's some stuff in the beacon, just overall bit of the route, but this will help with training new drivers. We get new drivers, or somebody's sick and somebody covers a route, it'll be built into this, so it'll automatically show every house, every stop, the exact optimized version of the route. So it will help kind of clear some of those items up as well for us. But this is a Sourcewell contract. The cost laid out is for $8,933.20 for year one, and that assumes we come to an agreement before eight-one of this year. If not, the first year is $9,718.40. And the reason is they have built in a buffer for implementation when you're not quite using it that one month, but they have a cutoff between their fiscal year type thing, and that's why it was honored through this time period. But it would be $9,422.40 for years two and three. It is a three-year contract through Sourcewell, that is the way that those are done. But it is my recommendation that the district enter into this agreement with Samsara as laid out in the contract below, or the agreement below.
Thank you. Questions or a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to purchase the Samsara GPS unit using a Sourcewell contract as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of Samsara GPS units through a Sourcewell contract as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the approval of Resolution 4-2025 for the sewer and storm water rate adjustments.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Before I get started, I'll make a quick note on the resolution, page two, under the industrial treatment near the top, phase one, it says 5630. That should just say 630, $6.30. The five was a carryover, a typo for the dollar sign, I'm unsure, but it should be So in 2022, a representative from Common Council, Wayne County Commissioners, Wayne County EDC, and Mayor Dave Snow, during the process of acquisition of new land in the Midwest Industrial Park, met to discuss the need to upgrade sewer infrastructure to accommodate capacity for further development of the park. During that time, it was known that Accoming Industries' projected usage would use all the remaining capacity of the sewer in the park. The Richmond Sanitary District was tasked to come up with the infrastructure upgrade options. RSD met with the design engineers to develop options to meet capacity needs. Several options were identified and drafted. Through subsequent meetings with the county and city officials, an option believed to be the most economical to meet the expected capacity needs was chosen. The chosen option comes with the need to upgrade, build the sewer serving the Midwest Industrial Park in three portions. The approximate cost for design of the method chosen was $2 million. In order to not impede the ability to market the land or to restrict already committed industries' plans, the design work needed to begin immediately with construction to also follow immediately on two of the needed three portions. As the district does not have a rate or a fund set aside for expansion, there were not sufficient funds on hand for the $2 million of design. The district had approximately $200,000 on hand for I&amp;I work in the Midwest Industrial Park area, to which the expansion would address, making those funds usable. The city had approximately $800,000 in the Midwest Industrial Park account that was also related and usable. The EDC and county put forth $1 million, which allowed RSD to have the total $2 million needed to start design. Common Council approved that in late 2022 with Ordinance 53-2022. While design was underway, there were several meetings to discuss what financial mechanism would be used to fund the construction. At the end of the discussions, the only viable source of funding was determined to be sewer rates. The immediate two portions of sewer needing done are estimated at $26 million. The third portion, which we expect to need to begin to design sometime in the next five to 15 years, has an estimated $12 million price tag. The district also submitted this project to SRF in 2023 and 2024, trying to procure the lowest possible interest rate. The project did not fall in the fundable range, which we expected as is for expansion and not regulatory mandated reasons. The best interest option left to us now is through pooled funding through SRF, which is what we believe we would use on this project. The district has worked with OW Cronin Associates to determine what rates would need to be in place to both bond the first two portions of the upgrade project and to put funds into the capital improvement to be able to cash fund in part or whole the third portion, depending on how quickly that upgrade is needed. We look to close on the construction of the first two portions this fall. There have been discussions that TIF funds generated in the park, as industry comes in, and existing industry could be used to assist payback for the loans. Those have not been approved or finalized yet, so they can't directly be used now in a closing of a bond this fall. But it does have the potential to keep future sewer rates lower. And again, there are a lot of variables in that, how quickly that middle leg comes around, and how much the TIF generates. So we'll evaluate the rates, and if it means keeping them lower and not raising later, if it means some kind of reduction, if that's our case, or different expansion pieces, there can be a lot to that. But just know that the TIF does have a place to play in this later on. And I'll let Corby Thompson go over, he's from OW Cronin Associates, he will go over the rates. Before that, I just also want to say the storm water rate, which was last adjusted in 2009, was also reviewed. There is overlap between storm and sewer, meaning it helps keep the sewer rate low as we look to this, but being a 2009 rate, it needed to be reviewed in and of itself. But after that, I will turn it over to Corby here, and he can speak about the rates and specifics.
Thanks, Pat. Morning, Commissioners. So hopefully each of you guys have in front of you one of these rate analysis reports we put together. And the reason we call it a rate analysis is that it's really a rate study, but then we kind of give some additional information in there, like a longer-term capital improvement plan. You also see some key metrics and things of that nature. But as far as our discussion today, or my presentation today, I'm really just going to talk about the rates primarily. And I really am going to go over Schedule Two in that report in particular. I'm going to mention some other schedules, but Schedule Two, right, that's really the schedule that brings everything together. So like I said, I'll mention some of the other schedules as I go through parts of this schedule, but this is kind of what I believe you guys need to see as far as why we're looking at, you know, needing these rates here. So this first slide I have together is kind of just the top section here. And again, you have this in your report, so if it's easier to look there, feel free to do so, but just for anybody else watching. This is essentially the top section of the pro forma revenue requirement schedule. It is actually the calculation of the revenue requirements. And there's really three main pieces to this calculation, that being your operation and maintenance expenses, your debt service on your outstanding debt, and then some kind of working capital or allowance for capital improvements. We've then kind of further broken those down between sewer and stormwater so that we can kind of give some assessment to each of those rates, try to figure out really where both of those need to be. But again, those are kind of the three pieces. So first and foremost, again, you want to make sure you can run your day-to-day stuff. Secondly, make your debt payments, and then if there's any capital improvement funds available, you know, you can use those funds to do so. So again, cash and operation maintenance being that first piece. On pages three and four of your report, that's where you can kind of see the breakdown of your test year, operating dispersments, the pro forma adjustments then for '25 and '26, and then we use a little more of an aggregate figure for '27, '28, and '29 as far as our projections go. But again, you know, the major adjustments we have to, your operating dispersments are primarily for salaries and wages. I believe there was a study or a survey done of some kind last year, a few years ago, so we've incorporated those numbers into this report. And then there's also some known changes that are going to result from, I believe, this project, but then also new processes at the plant. So there's some additional, I believe, maybe like sledge hauling and chemical costs in there as well. So just want to mention those are kind of the big updates as far as the operation and maintenance costs go. So then down the next part's kind of your debt service requirements. This is just essentially all of your outstanding debt as it sits now. So in the back of this report, you can see all of those amortization schedules if you'd like to, also with the combined schedule. We've also included some proposed debt service figures, so this would be kind of what Pat was mentioning earlier, you know, the bonding for some of this Midwest Industrial Park projects. There's also a few other bonding projects that we have down the line that you can see on page five of the report. That's where you see the capital improvement plan. That's where you can see, you know, your five-year schedule of capital improvements that are needed by the district. And I thank Elijah and Pat for getting that together, because that's something that's really detailed that we don't often get from communities, so that's really helpful in this analysis. So we've included some figures for those, you know, the estimated debt service on those proposed bonds. And then last but not least, you kind of have your allowance for capital improvements. And this is just kind of what the district needs on an annual basis just for, you know, what we kind of call pay-go projects, or kind of the other option, and be as Pat mentioned, you know, down the line, there's going to be a third phase of this. You know, you could accumulate money so that you don't then have to issue additional bonds down the line. So it also provides coverage, right? It gives you kind of your debt service coverage requirements per your bond ordinances. So that kind of comes up with your total revenue requirement, so that's what we need to raise, you know, in order to fund all of these projects and make sure we can run the day-to-day operations of the district. Second slide, perfect, thank you, is the actual revenues that we're looking at. So again, we're comparing your test year revenues for 2025 plus known adjustments, right? So we still have, I believe your report says 6%, but I believe it's actually 5.75%. That was a rate increase that was implemented this year. The numbers are all correct, but there's just a little typo on there in your report to justify it. But anyways, so we've got 5.75% increase this year. We then kind of need an additional 6% for the next three years, and then one final little third phase to get us back up to 150% debt service coverage, and also, again, making sure we can pay for all of these projects, as well as the debt service on any of these major projects and the day-to-day operations. So this, yeah, so again, perfect, you can see where these kind of just compare. So again, wherever we have a shortfall, right, that's essentially what we need to implement as a rate increase. So again, you've got shortfalls each year of around, we'll just call it around $1 million, and so we kind of need to generate additional revenues each year of about $1 million in order to meet these revenue requirements. Then I think this is the last slide here, and this is where you can see the impact, right? The 5.75% that we've already implemented for this year, the 3.6% rate increases, and the 3% for that final year. I also want to mention stormwater increases, so that's a series of 15% rate increases each one of those years. And again, that puts the residential billing amount at about $9.40. Based on a lot of the studies I've done recently, that's still below what I'm typically seeing a lot of units go to, so do want to mention that. But that also does consider, right, when we look at the revenue requirements, kind of trying to match up stormwater operating costs to the capital requirements to any allocation of debt they may have. So there's a combination of trying to be comparable to other communities, but also trying to match up the actual needs of what this district needs. So that's all I was going to really present today as far as this goes. Now, I can go through any of the schedules in the report that you have, but I kind of just wanted to lay out, you know, what we look at in particular in bringing it all together when it comes to, you know, this is why we need to do this. We've just got operating costs that are, you know, they're increasing. Per that salary study, we just know we're behind there, so we're getting that up to speed. You've got these upcoming projects, that's your increase to your debt service requirements, and then you've kind of got your other capital projects, your pay-go amount. So when you kind of add all that up, this is kind of what we're seeing as far as what we'd like to see the revenues produce. You have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer any, or...
Well, I guess I just want to make clear to anybody who's looking at this, this is just the sewer component. This is not, we cannot take monies from the landfill and put them towards the sewer or vice versa.
That's correct. This is exclusive to essentially wastewater and stormwater services. Correct.
Yes. And, you know, another question that we often hear, I think we hear every time we have a rate study, is, well, we bonded before, and why are we still having increases? You know, why aren't the bonds going away? And so I think maybe that's something, I think you've addressed, but you're not showing the slides here, but we're very clear that, you know, we still have bonds that are running out until 2033 and beyond from other projects.
Correct.
Those numbers are included in here, paying that debt service as well.
That's correct. Yeah, included in this report is an outstanding list of all of the bonds that the, when I say district, I guess I shouldn't be specifying wastewater and stormwater utility specifically. But yeah, so we look at all of the outstanding debt, some of it gets rolled off. Now, we also, sometimes in order to keep rates low, we may consider wrapping debt service. So even though there are certain bonds maturing, in order to lessen the impact of the new bonds, we may wrap the debt service, meaning some of the later years might have larger payments, so that, again, we minimize the impact on the current, currently what we need for rates. Because otherwise, we just start stacking debt, and eventually you'd have to do quite a large rate increase. And again, so that's another thing we're proposing here, is a series of some smaller rate increases so that there's not necessarily any rate shock. You know, if we don't do anything now, there are some larger projects down the line where, you know, if you were only going to do, you know, 3% for the next few years, maybe you can get by with the current projects, but once that big project comes online, you know, there's a 50-some million-dollar project out there, you know, then you're going to need a 30% rate increase. And, you know, when you start it now, you start accumulating money earlier, too. So there's kind of a double benefit there.
Yeah. Well, I think being, I have seen from my time here, that unlike the for-profit sector out there where they have annual increases, or they do fuel surcharges, you know, we've just not been in a series of doing, you know, obviously either of those. We can't just, when the gas prices go up, tack on $12 to everybody's bill every month, which, you know, some of the other providers can do. And while it seems like we have had increases over the last several years with more frequency, I was mentioning to Pat, I've been around probably almost 20 years, and we probably went for 30 years before that without much in the way of rate increases at all. So unfortunately, when we have a rate increase that needs to catch up for past lack of increases, they end up being larger.
Sure. And that happens very often, as you see communities that they go a long time without doing a rate increase. Now, luckily, you know, I know we did have maybe like a 15% or something at the start of the last rate increases we did, but I could be wrong, and I could be thinking about somebody else here. But a lot of times, you see, you know, communities go 20-plus years or whatever without a rate increase, then they got to do a 60% rate increase.
Yeah.
Well, it'd have been a lot easier on your customers potentially to do some smaller ones in the interim that would ultimately equal the 60% you need, but you've also been accumulating additional cash there, so that your borrowing requirements on your projects, right, go down. So, yeah, there's a lot of benefit in doing it this way. It's just, you know, the numbers are what they are, too, right? Sometimes you have a series of rate increases like this just because you've got some bigger projects out there. That's just unfortunately the nature of running utilities, there's high capital costs there. And when those come, yeah, you might see a series of rate increases, saying, well, we used to never have rate increases. Well, you know, there may have been no major projects that needed to get done for some time. So all of those are kind of factors that go into things when we're looking at the rates, and why is this community doing this versus why that community did this? You know, everybody's got their own set of circumstances, so, you know, the last thing I'll mention, nobody wants to increase rates, right? Nobody wants to do that, but it's just kind of what we have to do to keep this utility operating where we want it to be.
And I think you alluded to the fact that we have looked in the past, I haven't, I don't know, I haven't seen it a little while, but what our rate is compared to comparable cities throughout the state, and I think we're historically level with or even a little below.
And we're significantly lower, too, than where we thought we were going to have to be with the long-term control plan requirements through some very good bidding and work through the engineering department. I think we were, it was almost $20 more is what the unmeted rate was supposed to be at the last time we approved these in 2022. We were $20 or so below. so below what we were expected to do. And if you remember, those projects, the level of separation is both an actual measurement of how much they want separated, but it's tied to an economic burden. So how much they make us do is tied to that. The fact that we were tracking low is great for the community, but it was always a possibility that the state could have made us do more separation because our rate was so low, right? So it's a two-fold edge as we do projects, as watching that. But yes, compared to other communities, we're about in the middle. And compared with where we were supposed to be with long-term control plan, we're still well below where we were expected to be at this point in time.
And I think it's also really important to say back to the point of those bonds that are being paid off. It's just like our house, you know. We pay off our house, but we end up having more expenses to repair it, to maintain it, and, you know, that we're trying to get ourselves into a position that will have enough to do those pay-as-we-go projects for maintenance, for upkeep of the system. And I think that the staff has done a good job of that as well.
Yeah, they've done a great job. And this is, in my opinion, you guys are being very proactive in this, too. You know, a lot of times, you know, we'd be, I'd be coming to you in November or something when we're looking to actually issue the bonds. And I say, oh, by the way, actually, looking at your rates, you need to do 30% before we can issue these bonds. So again, yeah, having that long-term capital plan in there is really nice. And you guys are really setting yourselves up for, you know, not having to do that. And it's just, you know, I commend you guys for that, so.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for coming today and making the presentation. While, as I understand, we would approve the resolution, but it would not officially take any effect until the council would review.
Correct. It would be scheduled to go to common council on August 4th for first reading, and then it will be advertised to be on public hearing and second reading on August 18th. And it would be post that, at council's leisure, as to whether or not these actually get adopted and through the ordinance, which I think is 35/2025.
Ready for make a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for approval of resolution 4-2025 for sewer and stormwater rate adjustment as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve rate resolution 4-2025 for sewer and stormwater rate increases as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve wastewater residuals disposal permit R-CMS 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29 for Commercial Maintenance Services LLC.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to approve the wastewater residuals disposal permit as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the wastewater residuals disposal permit as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to enter an agreement with Maxim Automation for Instrument and Control System Technical Services.
Yes, Madam President and Board Member. Several years ago, our wastewater treatment plant implemented a SCADA system that is supervisory control and data acquisition. We have had an agreement with a non-contractor, excuse me, contractor for help and service and repairs of the system since then. The contractor will supply a technician for an onsite emergency response on a 24-hour-per-day, seven-days-a-week basis. The contract with our current company ended earlier this year. On June 16th, we sent out RFPs to five companies who offered this service. The due date for the proposals to be returned to Todd Hobson, our plant superintendent, and myself was July 1st. On June 23rd, 2025, Maxim Automation dropped off their proposal to our building department at 25 North 7th Street. Only one proposal was received. And I was contacted by two other companies that we sent the RFPs to. They declined to submit the proposal. The two other companies did not contact or send a proposal to Todd or I. Jason Combs and I have reviewed these proposals, received from Maxim Automation, and our recommendation is to Maxim. They have done work for us in the past and have knowledge of our SCADA system. They have always been professional and good to work with. After reviewing the proposal from Maxim, Todd and I recommend to the board to award this on-call service to Maxim Automation of Fishers, Indiana. Maxim Automation meets all of our requests and requirements. Our RFP requested, asked the contractor to guarantee a minimum of two days per month. The two days will equal 16 hours of work time. The rate of pay per hour on year one and year two is $270 per hour. Year three, the rate of pay is 275 per hour. If a technician would be needed on an emergency on-call, the cost per hour is $400. Telephone consultant consultations shall be billed at 15-minute increments. Travel time is not incorporated into the hourly rate. The technician shall bill only for time on-site, not including emergencies. This equates to approximately $50,000 per year for the service. This is a similar dollar amount to be budgeted, has already been budgeted in the past.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion?
Just a quick question. So the ones that decline, do they ever give a reason as to why they're declining?
Yes. Both of them had lost their technicians that does this type of work.
Staffing. Okay. Thank you.
Entertain a motion then.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to enter into agreement with Maxim Automation for Instrument and Control System Technical Services as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to enter into an agreement with Maxim Automation for Instrument and Control System Technical Services as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation for the purchase of trash and recycling containers using Sourcewell contract.
Yes, Madam President and Board Member. The solid waste department is in need of 1,044 new plastic container, plastic trash and recycling containers for the year 2025. We currently use Cascade containers that we have purchased through Pyramid Equipment for the past several years. We have repair parts on hand for the Cascade containers. The recommendation, we recommend Pyramid Equipment is now able to utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing program to provide us with these Cascade, these containers as Cascade Engineering participates in Sourcewell program, purchasing program, using contract number 120324-CEI. This contract provides the city with a 4% discount off the normal retail price that we have paid in the past. I recommend that the board award this purchase to Pyramid Equipment of Rolling Prairie, Indiana, for the amount of $55,147,091 cents.
Always amazes me how many we go through.
It does. It does.
Yes. I will entertain a motion or comments?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation for purchase of trash and recycling containers using the Sourcewell contract as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to award the purchase of trash and recycling containers using a Sourcewell contract. Any further questions or comments?
I'll make one quick comment on the recycling, as we're looking to upgrade the recycling. The state has, and it's open anytime, there's not like deadlines for it, but for recycled cans for growing it. So we do hope, although this is kind of a, as we award this, it's kind of blanket amounts, but Randy Wright, the manager of Solid Waste, is kind of preparing to apply for those grants, and we can get 50% off or better sometimes of the recycling containers as we start to grow those routes.
That's right. We did early on get some. Okay, thank you. I guess we're ready for a motion then. Or we have the motion. Vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to award the quote for 14-yard containers.
Yes, Madam President and Board Member. The solid waste department is in need of 14-yard roll-off trash containers for the residential bulky trash, yard waste, and brush collection within the Richmond Sanitary District. An RFQ seeking a contract for these items was sent out on June 12th, 2025, with the return date of June 24th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. One response was received that met the specification of this RFQ. Randy Wright and I have reviewed the quote, and we recommend to the board to award this purchase to Converto Manufacturing of Cambridge City, Indiana, for the following amount: as many as eight orange 14-yard roll-off containers for $4,500 each, plus a $50 shipping per container. Converto Manufacturing was the lowest, most responsive and responsible company to quote this item.
Thank you. Questions or a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to award quote for the 14-yard containers as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to award the quote for 14-yard containers as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is the project status update.
Yes, Madam President and Board. We have quite a few projects. I'll try to be brief in my explanation of each, but feel free to jump in if you have questions on anything as I go. First projects are Northwest 13th Street Interceptor. That project's still yet to be closed out. There's a little warranty work that's, we're kind of holding up, closing that out. But it is still in process. Next projects are advanced planning for our CSO disc filter, or a high-rate treatment facility at the wastewater treatment plant for our CSOs. That project is continuing down a path to update and finalize the preliminary engineering report for the project. You'll see here later, we were able to update our model for our collection system. That way, we were able to finalize the exact sizing that we needed this facility to be. So we continue down that path of getting that project preliminarily designed and analyzed, and we should move into final design later this year on that. As I said, we've updated our model and long-term control plan discussions, I guess, to kind of confirm the path that we're taking for compliance, regulatory compliance as we move forward. That was always something that, as we've designed projects over the years, there's a couple different paths you can take. And so we were able to design things in a way that gave us options at this point in time. But through discussions with a couple of our consultants, both Commonwealth and Donahue, as well as a discussion with IDEM, I think we've come to the conclusion of staying the route that we had planned to begin with, and then proceeding down the path of designing our high-rate treatment around that, but giving ourselves in that design the flexibility of being able to adapt to future regulations in a more phased approach if need be. So I felt it was the most economical and cost-effective way to do that now, without over-designing, overbuilding, but giving us a more certain regulatory future as we look down the road. So. Our next project is our wastewater treatment plant grading and railing evaluation. This is basically an update to a project we had done in the past, that we've had, you know, multiple phases of grading replacement and railing replacement. This just comes back around and reevaluates all of those same areas, as well as anything we didn't touch, making sure we're staying on top of keeping all those things in good condition and order. Next project, Project 5, is CSO Long-Term Control Plan Separation. We've had some miscellaneous things here and there, and continue as we find things that need to be separated, that we work to do that. The next two projects are associated with I and I work, so basically separation. And we're doing some smoke testing, both in the north and far north Richmond area, as well as our Round Barn Road area. And so those smoke testing results will be reviewed and analyzed. And if separation is needed for those, we will come back and work to complete that as we move forward with those particular areas. Sewer lining or sewer rehab for 2026. We've started looking at areas that we know that will need to line, or that are on the list to be evaluated for lining. So that's starting to come together for next year. We did complete Project 9, the 24 and 25 lining project, as a change order with some funds left over in some of our projects. And so we basically took the monies that we would have had set aside for this year, and didn't spend those in a separate project. And so that basically went back into the pot for future projects because the 25 year was done through that change order. Project 10 is our Short Creek List Station project. That project is up and going, and just working on a few warranty items on that as well, and pending final change order and closeout for that. So we'll probably have a change order at the next meeting or two to get that project fully cleaned up and finalized. But construction went well, and good to have that online, giving us good pumping capacity in that area, which we lacked before. Hayes Lift Station Rehab Project, similar there. That station is up and going. They're just recently installed the backup pump that is on-site out there. And so they have just a few last items to finish up on-site, along with some restoration. But that project is essentially substantially complete as it is operational at this point. The, as we said before, I think, a while back, Project 12, the miscellaneous wastewater treatment plant improvements, which included digester mixing and a number of things, that's been just put on hold as those items likely have some changes as we move forward with some other things. So. Project 13, Roofing Tower Demolition, that project, the towers are down. There's still final restoration to happen with that, but that project's essentially substantially complete. And that area definitely looks a lot, lot different, but it opened up some area for our next project, which is the bio-solids facility. We are going to go look at some technology that we anticipate using for that project here in the next month or so. It is in use in another community here in Indiana. And so we're going to be able to visit that, ask some questions, get some feedback, and then be able to make a final decision of how we're moving forward with bio-solids handling at our treatment plant. Talked a little bit about Midwest Industrial Park sewer extension and capacity through our rates here this morning. That project design is continuing forward, working on easement acquisition with the idea that we'll bid that later this fall or early winter. We've got a couple of projects that we're just in the valuation stage, so we have flow meters out, those next three projects. So Commerce Road Capacity Evaluation, Northwest 19th and Street C, as well as West Main Street Capacity Evaluation, and then Hawkins Road, Glen Miller Park Sewer Replacement. All of those areas have flow meters out, and we are looking at what kind of upgrades are needed to give us more capacity and do some line replacement in those areas. We have a small storm project on Cedar Cliff. This came from the larger project where we were evaluating Bachmeier Trace Detention. This came from the larger project where we were evaluating Bachmeier Trace Detention, but there is a small project on Cedar Cliff, which we are working on moving forward. We talked to Lockman earlier recently about completing the the design of that. We'd started in-house, but with our vacant position, had to move that to a consultant to complete, and so we're moving forward with that. And may bid it late this year, but it it's likely going to be probably first thing next year before that project gets bid. Project 20 is our Bachmeier Trace Detention Pond Improvement Project, as well as Scott Ditch Study. Scott Ditch Study should be fully complete and finalized in the next month, and the Bachmeier Trace Detention Improvement Analysis and and basically a choice as to which which route we need to go for, completing a project to to mitigate those flooding issues out there. We'll have all the information we need and be able to to move forward with with something on that project. Project 21 is a project on the west side and has really been on hold for for the time being. Project 22 is a project we're in the midst of construction right now. Part of that project is complete on North J Street, but the Henley and Hodgins Improvement Area, we're going to add some inlets there. That should be done here in the next couple of weeks. We just bid the wastewater treatment plant levy project this morning, received bids with the idea that we will make a recommendation to award likely at our next meeting if everything checks out when we review the bids, and that will allow us to meet all the deadlines that we had associated with the the grant that we received for that project. Our MS4 program, we're just continuing to to work through new general permit changes and keep keeping things updated and and moving forward with that implementation rollout. I don't have any really news on cell closure at the landfill. Continuing just to deevaluate that for, to be done as as needed. And then the last thing is asset management. Haven't talked about that in a while, but we are in the ballpark of 80% complete probably with that, as far as working through all the departments and, or to our last department, but it's the biggest department, it's the most complicated one. It's our wastewater treatment plant and maintenance of that. And so there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of, a lot of miscellaneous assets, and and so that's one that's that that we're just starting to work through now. But once that happens, we'll be able to start implementing the actual software in the different departments, along with some storeroom-type, like inventory pieces to the software as well. So it's moving forward, slow, slow, but it is, it is moving forward. So a lot of projects, kind of real quick.
Yeah.
Any, any questions on anything?
No. I appreciate you putting this together. I know we used to do it every meeting, but.
That can be a lot sometimes.
Yeah. So every six months or so, yeah, we'll do it. But yeah, no, very busy, a lot of projects. You know, we see them come in each month in bits and pieces, but don't really see the whole.
Yep.
The whole package or or go back and and touch them long, you know, after they've been awarded. So appreciate you taking the time to put that together for us. Did you have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much. That takes us to miscellaneous, and under miscellaneous, I have to approve the minutes from the June 10th, 2025 meeting.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for approval of the June 10th minutes as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 10th, 2025 meeting as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. That, is there any other business?
It was amend the February 11th.
amend the February. And I never did.
I think we need to amend the agenda.
Oh, agenda, yeah.
To include the 610 approval and.
Oh, okay.
Amendment to the other minutes.
Okay.
So.
Probably easier to follow up.
Yep.
And you said, okay, and I looked back and I still didn't find it.
I can read that out if that works. Just give me one moment. Okay. So do you want me to just read action item number two? Or the, oh, no, the bullet, okay. Yeah, that that's the one that makes the most sense. Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for amendment reflecting a mission and error from the original minutes, and will approve the recommendation to, trying to figure out the correct wording, approve the addition of the February 11th amendment of 2025, along with the approval of the board minutes added from the June 10th meeting into this current agenda.
Okay.
So that'd be the first action item.
Okay. And I will second that motion.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second to amend the agenda for today's meeting for the June 10th minutes and the February.
11th, 2025.
25 minutes. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay?
Okay. And then I'll add the amendment, which was from February 11th, 2025 board meeting, which was recommendation to enter an agreement with Beta Mechanical for big bubble air compressor servicing at the cost of $8,843.11 per year, beginning February 1st, 2025, and entering January 31st, 2028.
And so we're approving that to be made part of the minutes.
Just be retroactive.
Okay. So there is a motion, and I will second the motion to approve that the comment provided on by council be included as part of today's minutes relative to the February 2025 minutes previously approved.
I will second.
Okay. And I thought I seconded.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Who made that motion? Did he make it when he read it?
Yes.
I don't know. So I second. Stated the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I'm hoping you can make some sense of all that. Okay, thank you very much. Any other business that needs to be brought before the board today? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. And I will turn the meeting then over to President Bakshi for the Stormwater Board Meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the July 22nd, 2025 Richmond Sanitary District Stormwater Management Board Meeting. First item of the agenda is the approval of board minutes from June 10th, 2025.
And President Bakshi, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Any questions or comments? I will enter, I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next item is the approval of invoices from check dates June 6, 13, 20, and 27, along with July 4th and July 11th, 2025, totaling amount of $14,617.03.
And President Bakshi, I'd like to make a motion that we approve invoices from check dates June 6, 13, 20th, and 27th, and July 4th and 11th of 2025, totaling $14,617.03.
I will second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. The third item on the agenda is the approval of Resolution 4-2025 for sewer and stormwater rate adjustment.
Yes, Mr. President and Board. This is the same resolution that was before you before. It's one resolution and one ordinance that will, that will update these rates, but as a headstorm component, I wanted to make sure it came to the Stormwater Board as well.
Perfect. Are there any questions or comments? All entertain a motion.
And President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve the amended rate resolution number 4-2025 as presented.
I will second. Again, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Takes us to miscellaneous. Is there anything from miscellaneous? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.